This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of August 17th, 2020. Prior to calling the roll and starting the official meeting, I would ask that everyone join me in a moment of silence for our former councilman, Mike Pollak, who died suddenly late last week. Thank you. Call the order, please.
Councilwoman Hess here, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson here, Councilman Mitchell here, Councilman Noah here, and Mayor Walagora here.
Please rise and reflect.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for...
Do you just do that, or? And for anyone that's on the Zoom meeting with us, or go to meeting with us, we've muted your mics, but when we call for citizens to address, we'll open them back up if you have something to address. But first off, we will approve the minute, or the agenda, and I'm still a little bit light on the agenda. We, we, someone... Do we, we have, we approve it first?
Right.
Okay. We're gonna approve it first.
I move to approve the agenda.
For...
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Okay, and we'd like to agenda, modify the agenda, excuse me. Go ahead.
I would like to add, under reported officers, number B, Anna Soich, to make an absentee ballot presentation.
Any other modifications to the agenda this evening? Can I get support for that?
Support.
When you're ready.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora? And Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Okay, we'll add that. Approve all the minutes for regular session of August 3rd, 2020. Any issues or changes? All right, citizens appearing for council on agenda, non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. It's the only time during the city council meeting that you're allowed to address council. I will give, anyone in the room, no, and anyone online, hands or anything? All right, we'll move on. No public hearings. The consent agenda this evening is A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $495,689.96. B is a budget amendment requesting carryover funding from fiscal year 1920 to fiscal year 2021 for information technology projects. C is a new event, suicide prevention walk to be held Saturday, September 26, 2020, beginning at 9:00 a.m. And D is a oral appointment of Jerry Tracy to the authority for brownfield redevelopment for a three-year term expiring 9/1/2023. I move, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Motion clear.
Thank you.
Next, we have presentations. First is the retirement recognition of officers, Chet Spencer and David Cook. Joel Jett is here for that.
Over the years, many of you have probably heard me refer to APD of officers and his family. And that's because we are. We are, in every sense of the word, and as true essence, brothers and sisters. And in the years that we spend together, we see the best of people. Sadly, we often see the worst. We support each other, we laugh together, and sometimes we cry together. There is a bond between us that forms, and until you pin on this badge, you will never understand. So that's why tonight is very bittersweet for us. Two of our brothers have announced their retirements and are leaving the APD family after many years of dedicated service to the city of Alpena. We are truly happy for them, and we are truly sad for us. First, I'd like to introduce Officer Chet Spencer. Chet, through the scan, please. Chet joined the department on July 26, 1995. And 25 years to the day, retired on July 26, 2020. During his career with APD, and in addition to his oral patrol duties, Chet served as our first school resource officer. He did that for 13 years, served that capacity from 1998 to 2012. Then, last year, as we entered into our agreement with ACC for our enhanced law enforcement practices on campus, Chet was also chosen for that position. Now, when I informed ACC President Don McMaster that Chet was retiring, I think it's safe to say he was probably sadder than I was. As we were discussing Chet's retirement and his replacement, he actually said, in this little poem, he said, "Can I get somebody like Chet, like Officer Spencer?" And I think that says it all right there. That's quite a compliment when they said, "Please send a similar guy like me to his head." These positions, as you can imagine, come with their own challenges, and Chet was always well-suited for them, and he always made us proud, always, in those, that service. Next, I'd like to introduce Officer Dave Cook. Dave, if you'd just move over a little bit, there you go, not too close. Dave began his law enforcement career with the Milletton Police Department in August 10th, correct, of 1994. And after serving approximately four years at that department, he joined us at APD on December 28th, 1998. During his career of almost 22 years with APD, Dave, like many others, took on extra duties and responsibilities at the department. In 2003, and also in addition to his honorable police work, he stepped up and served as our, one of our firearms instructors with the PD, and eventually became the lead firearms instructor for the department. And because that wasn't enough, also in 2003, Dave also took on the role of the property or evidence room officer. Now, I cannot begin to remotely explain the responsibilities that job entails. You have to literally document everything that goes in and out of that room. You have to keep meticulous, very detailed records because cases depend on it. And if you ever saw a property room and everything that's in there, you'd be very impressed by that task. So he handled that also with exceptional skill. And lastly, I cannot forget to mention that Dave was our techie guy. Everybody's got one, he was ours. And so anything electronics, and we have a lot, Dave was our guy to go to when we had a problem, this needs fixed, this needs installed. And I can honestly say that over the years, Dave saved the city of Alpena thousands upon thousands upon thousands of dollars because we didn't have to call somebody else to come in to fix or rewire something. He was able to do it for us. So that scale will be set in this. I told him I'd keep it short tonight, so I'll state my promise. So that kind of brings us to our presentations. There is a traditional law enforcement that when announced retirees, the department presents a marker with what we commonly refer to as the retirement sleeve. We actually take a piece of their uniform to put the sleeve as the name. And it is pressed and embroidered with their name, rank, and years of service. Lieutenant, can you do this? Thank you. You also see at the bottom that there are stars, and each star represents five years of service. And typically, as you'll see on all your books, there's also what we call a hash mark. And that would represent two years of service. So you add up the numbers of stars and the hash marks, and that's what you give your years. The sleeve is framed, and next to it is the certificate of retirement, which will attest to the officer's years of honorable and dedicated service to the city. So... With that said... Officer Spencer is with great honor and pride. I present this seat.
Can you redo that?
Officer Cook, likewise, sir, is with great honor and privilege. I present this mic to you. Gentlemen, on behalf of a grateful committee and department, I wish to thank you for your many, many years of service. We wish you peace and continued success in all your endeavors. Well done, Bernard. Thank you.
Next up to, well, the officers are just gonna wait for a second and then come back. Let's see, in keeping with their retirements, we have now recognition of Department of Public Works employees Tammy Romell and Jeff Tingler. And Rich Sullinger is here.
Jeff Tingler did not make, but Tammy Romell is here. So Tammy, if you'd like to come in. And I certainly don't have anything as eloquent as Joel's, but I do want to say that Tammy Romell has worked with the city's Department of Public Works for 22 years and three months. During that time, she was our storeroom clerk. And I feel, you know, the people out in the world are probably rejoicing that they're not gonna get beat up by Tammy for $3 on this, $2 on that.
You are famous.
She is. Tammy is absolutely famous about the money that she has saved the city in negotiating with people. I don't know how many times, you know, she called me saying, "Rich, I can get, like, you know, Christmas lights for 38 cents a box." It's like, okay, how many bucks do you get? All I've got, you know, 500 boxes, a thousand boxes. But she was always looking out for the best interest to the city. And we're very thankful for your years of service, and we have a certificate. And it, now that it's all for this, now it's Joel, come on. We'll buy only the 10th one. For 22 years and three months of dedicated service to the citizens of Alpena, thank you, Tammy Romell.
Thank you.
And Tammy, if you want to hold just for a second, we're gonna, Steve will probably want a photo, so we'll have the officers and you coming. There's a couple of me on there, so if you don't want to turn off. We're gonna get your picture. Well, Tammy, let's get Tammy a master, so somebody doesn't freak out.
Oh, sure, the sign waves should get more.
Who was that? Oops.
Bill, she probably sent it.
Yeah, he just sent it off to all the news media. All right, smile, smile. I think he has the prettiest mitts. Next up, report of the designation of voting delegates at the Michigan Municipal League Annual Convention.
Okay, so this is what we do every year. This year's conference is gonna be virtual. So, but we still do have to designate by action of our governing body any of our officials who will be in attendance at the convention as your official representative to cast the vote of the municipality at the annual meeting, and if possible, to designate one other official to serve as alternate. And it says right here in writing, "Voting delegates must have access to a computer with reliable internet connection and a smartphone. Delegates will be sent login information and instructions the week of the convention."
Yeah, typically Greg and I kind of debated on who was gonna go down, but at that time, it was always who was gonna drag down the lancing for the meeting. With that not being an issue, I can log on and cast the vote. It's very simple. The meeting is very simple. If no one's got an issue with that. So...
Do I need a motion?
Yeah, because the X were designating. Let's do a motion with both, who can, who wants to be the backup.
I can be the backup.
The alternate. Yep, I'm very comfortable with that. So, okay. I know that we designate the mayor to be the voting delegate for the city of Alpena, and Mayor Pro Tem to serve as the alternate.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Next up is the clerks have an absentee ballot presentation.
Okay, well, I'd just like to clear up some misconceptions that are out there about absentee voting and the USPS. So a couple hours ago, I called the Alpena postmaster, Rob Rose, and he wanted me to assure you that, he said, rest assured about ballot mailing. And he mentioned twice that all votes count. He's very dedicated to ensuring that, that everything is processed that he has up until his deadline on election day. He said, he told me a quick story about, he said, "Last year, there was two ballots that he had received. They were placed in the drop box after the deadline. And he personally drove up to Sheboygan, dropped one off, and then drove to St. Ignace and dropped up another one." So that, that's dedication right there. But, so they, any ballots that are received in Alpena, if they're for the city, if they're for the township, it all stays here. They don't send it off to their processing facility in Traverse City to be sorted. All election materials are like that. Even our ballot applications that go out, because they're marked, they say right on election. So they keep everything here. Let's say, so I actually go in Preskill County. If I were to drop my ballot off here at the post office, that would actually go to Gaylord, but they already have bins with zip codes of those coming in, and they go, they go out right away. They don't go on to Traverse City. We have not experienced any issues. Well, we did get a few that were for Wilson Township, and then we also got a couple for Alpena Township, but, but those right back in the mail, and they received them, and then I personally delivered a couple to Alpena Township. So everything is accounted for. We did have about 250 absentee ballots that we did not receive back. So we issued over 1,760 absentee ballots, and what actually went through the tabulator on election day was 1,520. So I brought that up with postmaster Rose, and he said that we have nothing here. Our facility is clean, have nothing sitting anywhere. So that means that those are still in the hands of the voters.
So they chose not to vote?
Exactly. And something that maybe came up between the time when they requested the ballot to election day, something changed their mind, and we didn't vote. We are, we, the state provided us with a ballot drop box, and we are going to, we still haven't decided on the location yet, but we're thinking across from where the green drop box is right now. We pour a concrete pad and put the ballot box there, and it would be clearly marked that it's a ballot drop box, and it'll be checked every single day leading up to the election. As always, voters can stop by the clerk's office to request an absentee ballot, and they can vote that right there in person. It doesn't ever have to leave City Hall. They can vote it and leave it with us. They can come in in person, request it, take it with them. They can return that by mail, or they can drop it off, put it in the drop box, or bring it inside. So I think, you know, we've covered all of our bases with that. And also, I just want to clarify that I think there's also a misconception with the difference between mail-in voting and absentee voting. They are two different things. So mail-in voting, from the research that I've done, is there's about five states that have it. People register to vote, they get, they get an ID number, and then every election, they automatically get a ballot. That's not how it works here. Voters have to fill an absentee application. That's the main difference. But in the end, they're all processed the same, I would say. Yeah, I would say the process by which they request them is the difference.
And when people apply for an absentee ballot, it's an application, and the clerk goes through that application, if there's something from this about it, they just get it back?
Absolutely. So this election, as I was receiving them, and I noticed that some of the signatures didn't match. There was three of those, and two of them, I asked to come back, and they, they signed in front of me, and I verified that that was them. So I accepted those. There was one, though, that we got on election day, and I just, I didn't have any contact information, and it, there was not enough time, so I just rejected it, it wasn't counted. But I wasn't gonna just let it go through because, just to get it in, I mean, I had to reject it.
So the ballots that go to the local post office, are they delivered to City Hall? Do we, do we pick them up?
They're delivered to us by the postal carrier, but we do also double-check on election day. And we do also double-check the, the green drop box out there. Even though that's not our ballot, we didn't use it for that purpose this time, and now that we have a dedicated one, they should go in there, but we'll, we'll still check both taxes.
So if somebody applies for an absentee ballot and they get it, so everything worked out, and you sent that off, they didn't vote absentee, can they still go vote in person?
If they didn't get their ballot?
If they didn't turn in their absentee. So let's say...
Oh, yeah. So our system would show that they had issued an absentee ballot. And we actually had some, some people that they had requested a ballot. They went to the precinct to vote in person, and the system showed that they were actually already issued an absentee ballot. So they didn't have it with them because they had destroyed it at home. So in that case, they sign an affidavit saying that they lost it or destroyed it. And then the poll worker can issue them a new ballot to vote in person.
And the city would know that they didn't vote twice by signing an affidavit?
Yeah, no, they could vote twice. That wouldn't happen.
I know, but that's what somebody's gonna say.
Yeah. No, it's, it's not gonna happen. Because our system is sophisticated enough to catch that. It won't even let us issue a ballot to another person.
You said that they...
That means it's two of them for one.
You said that you come in, call an application for absentee ballot that can either be picked up or mailed to them. What about this shot here of mail-in ballot applications that was sent out by the Secretary of State, which I destroyed because I didn't request it? What is the difference between those two?
So we maintain a permanent absentee list. People that have indicated to us that they want us to automatically mail them an application, not a ballot, you always have to fill an application every single election or to even get a ballot. So we maintain a permanent list, and we sent the applications to all of the voters that were on that list. Then the state mailed applications to everybody that wasn't on that list.
For what reason? Is the state why? Is the state why spend the money? I understand that. I'm just saying is that that's where a lot of confusion came about here between mail-in ballot, the, the application process, or the absentee ballots. So you can see where confusion kind of comes up about this, and where they think there's a possibility of funny business going on with it. Because if it's not me getting the application to file for an absentee ballot, is it possible that someone else could file in my name for it?
What happens at home? Someone could, but we're gonna check that signature with what's in the system. That someone, when they registered to vote, they signed a card. We scan that into the system. It's also on their MasterCard that we keep on file. So we're double-checking that, and if those signatures don't match, we call, we contact them if we have contact information. If we don't, then we just, we reject it.
So that's, I destroyed that because I didn't ask for it, so.
Right. So we're checking the signature on the ballot application, and then once we get the ballot returned to us, we're also checking the signature again there.
So you think this is gonna be something we're gonna do every election?
Well, with proposal 18-3, that passed a couple years ago, that opened it up to anybody can vote absentee without having a reason. So the most that I've seen so far was with this last election, even though our overall voter turnout was only 36%. It's still really low. So each precinct only had about 200 to 300 voters that actually voted in person. And just last week, I, I ordered another tabulator because that way I can have two absentee voter county boards because I just don't know what this is gonna bring. And as of right now, they cannot start counting until 7:00 a.m. in the morning. When polls open at polling locations, that's when the AV County Board starts counting here. They were in here all day until, well, they were done by about 6:00 o'clock. But we changed some things in our process that made it a lot quicker to process them. But I think we're gonna have a lot more for this next election. So what I would probably do is, you can only have one tabulator in a room. So the other absentee county board would probably have to be in the basement conference room, and I'm thinking like a team of four for each one, so that we can get through them in a timely manner. But, you know, COVID added a whole other layer and a whole other reason that people would vote absentee. It has a lot of work on her side that you've probably seen the anatomy of an absentee ballot. There's a lot that goes into it.
So the absentee, on Danny's point, because, because if I request an absentee ballot application, that's different. I know it's coming, and I know I'm filling it out. But if I get one at my house, and I got four, and they weren't, didn't all have my name on it. And so if I were to send one in with one of the other people's names on it that came to my house, what, there's other, I didn't even open them and look at them, but, but there's other information on there other than a signature that someone's required to put on there that, that designates that it's them, driver's license, tempers, something that...
The ones that we send out and the state is already pre-printed with their name and address. So really, the only thing they need to fill out is, there was a box to check which elections they want to pertain to, because this was a dual application for both the August and November elections. So they had to fill that out. They can check if they want to be a permanent absentee voter, and then sign and date it. And then if they want the ballot mailed somewhere else, they can... And then if they want the ballot mailed somewhere else, they can indicate that. Because we do have, we do have over.
I mean, we can't say here because it's a state that's decided to do it, but it does seem like it opens a hole for someone to, to fill out a ballot that's not theirs. And then I show up and find out that somebody else already turned a ballot and with my name on it. It's kind of sad to think, but I think we could have easily done it, sitting right there on my table. But.
But you would have to sign somebody else's name and we would have matched that.
If you would have matched it, I suppose that's the way to catch it.
That's the key right there. It falls on us.
And you do that with every ballot that comes in?
Oh, yes.
Good.
They have, um, we print out address labels that go right on the return envelope and they have a barcode and we scan them and bring the voter right up. The signature comes right up. It's real quick process.
Somebody else saw on Facebook, is there anything on that label in front that identifies Republican, Democrat, and Indian?
I know, okay, you're talking about, I saw that too. That was on a mail-in, uh, ballot in another state that is completely mail-in. Um, and yeah, I saw where it had the R and the D, but no, ours don't. The only, um, uh, so there's the, the ballot number and the precinct is on there. But what party they are, we don't even, you don't even associate a party when you register to vote. You don't pick a party in our state.
Excellent. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, now we're at unfinished business and these are the proposed changes to the Evergreen Cemetery regulations. And which is that?
Sorry.
City Council had previously directed city staff to review the rules and regulations for Evergreen Cemetery for updates and potential modifications to the grave marker portion of the rules. Copy of the current rules is attached. Following rules and regulation modifications will discuss. Miscellaneous item five, which states as follows, following or prohibited in cemetery motorcycles, automobiles, horses, and dogs. Restrictions on motorcycles was based on not having loud motorcycles driving through the cemetery when the service was going on or someone was there in a mortal law. We have had groups of motorcyclists attend a funeral event to show their respect. This rule can be modified so as not to prohibit motorcycles. If this, if it becomes an issue in the future, we can certainly go back. The restrictions on dogs should be amended to prohibit unleashed dogs. We have a mutton dispenser placed at the entrance of the cemetery and if the pet owners are responsible enough to clean up after their pet, this should not be an issue. We do have problems with some pet owners bringing their dogs in and let them run free through the cemetery without leash, which is a violation of the city's leash law. Lot eight, decorations and plantings, item, uh, item eight states as follows. Artificial grave decorations containing metal including wire are hereby prohibited. Mayor and his suggested modifications. Suggested city allow the use of stainless steel headstones or grave markers. Ladder must be erected in concrete with prior approval from the cemetery supervisor. This discussion centers around allowing a stainless steel grave marker to be installed and do of the stone or marble marker. I've solicited input from the cemetery supervisor and the Public Works Division head on this issue. Cemetery supervisor visited another cemetery where a stainless steel marker was installed. His comments centered around durability and maintenance activities around the marker. To him, in his opinion, was not something we should allow in Evergreen Cemetery. I also solicited input from Sean McHenry, Public Works Division head. His concerns center around the durability and working around the marker when we have adjacent burials. His comments is as follows. There's also an issue with the style of grave marker not being able to be moved for nearby burials. Jim and I do a good chance for the cemetery supervisor and I have discussed this and don't feel it's an appropriate marker for our cemetery. I looked at the employees who have that. We have that operate the cemetery on a daily basis for input on any changes that will make their task more difficult or enhance the services we provide. In this case, they do not feel that allowing this type of marker is in the best interest of the city and I am in support of their position.
Okay, so if we, uh, let's, let's knock them out in order that they came. So a, anybody with the issue with, uh, the, or allowing motorcycles in the cemetery?
Well, I have several issues from the top down. I have several issues because if we're gonna do this, I think we should do it right. If we're gonna modify this document, we should modify it. Because there's a lot of stuff that's missing in here or isn't clear to me. And if it's not clear to me, I'm not sure how it can be put in. So, um, yeah.
No, I don't, I don't have an issue with, I don't have an issue with that at all. I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that we just go in some order.
We can start at the top.
Of the.
At the, it's a short, it's a short.
Okay.
I have no, and I, and that, and then we can discuss. I have no issues with the burials. I have no issues. Under no person shall, I think that a number two in that, I think we should put that no person shall disturb the peace at any time. I've been in the cemetery, you know, where there's fights going on and people yelling and screaming. And it's just hell around and I think that we should respect that. Number?
Well, wait, I mean, because I don't wanna, if we're gonna go, I don't wanna go back.
Okay.
Um, so you're suggesting under no person, person shall, number two is fine. No person shall deposit rubbish or debris on cemetery grounds except on edge of drives or in receptacles provided. And you would like to add a number three that says?
No person shall disturb the peace.
No person shall disturb the peace.
And I'll just throw this out. I, I know that Rachel had talked to me earlier about some other modifications. You know, when, when I looked at this, I focused on the, on that concepts that the mayor had brought up.
Right.
You know, it may be, this is from 1970s. It may be a time for a complete rewrite of the cemetery rules and regulations to be more encompassing. And, you know, we could, I mean, not trying to cut you off, you know, we'll take, take, take the, the comments and something you have.
Okay.
We could certainly incorporate it into an overall modification of the rules and rights as a, as opposed to trying to modify them as we move them to now.
I think that's fair. I think that's. So we'll, so, so for you, so you don't go back with staff and then come back and then we give you some more input. Let's provide you with our quick input now. And then if, and then if you take it back to, to staff and they say, and they have an issue with any of these that we've suggested, then you let, let us know that, hey, Sean's got an issue or Jim's got an issue with this. We'll kind of, we'll kind of talk it out. So.
And I'll get the recording from Anna so that I can catch these, we go and post it and write it down.
Okay.
Okay, do you want me to?
Yes.
Okay, so on, um, on lot, decor, decorations and plantings, on number four. It says the use of glass jars or bottles as receptacles for cut flowers is prohibited. And I understand that, except sometimes when there's a funeral, some of that stuff naturally comes from the funeral parlor to the gravesite. And I don't think that's a time to start telling people, no, we can't do that. I think that there can be, we can allow it at, at a funeral, you know, and they have to be removed in two to three weeks, something. But to ban them.
No, and I understand, we, that's not, we certainly wouldn't stop out there in the middle of the funeral and say, get those vases out of here.
But it says no and you just.
True.
So that being said, I think that we need to do that. So, um, planting.
And this way, because we're gonna allow everybody to have input on your input, just so we're.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna, something that you said, like having them there for a week or something like that. I'm gonna go, I, I'm gonna say that they will have to be removed that day. You leave glass of any kind in the cemetery overnight and you're asking for it to get broken. And I think that's the intent of, of this rule. So of course at a funeral, somebody brings some vases with, but I'm gonna suggest that they, that they will probably, Jim will probably come back and, and suggest that that's removed at that time.
And usually the funeral directors.
They're gonna, they're really good at that.
Okay, I, I don't have an issue with that. I just don't want a family to be able to do that. So it says on plantings, um, it says plant, it, well, it's first it says no hedge planting shall be permitted. So does hedge, does that include trees, hedges, or is that just hedges? Because on the next one, it says, um, plantings on cemetery graves or lots shall be permitted only under the direction of the cemetery's, um, supervision. I've never asked people to, when I'm planting flowers, is it okay if I do it?
It's, it's more, you know, if somebody goes in and plants a shrub next to a headstone. Because then as the shrubs get bigger, the paperwork increases our maintenance and that. So I think that's what's geared for, but we could certainly clean that line of junk.
So, so that people know you can't plant trees and shrubs and all of that, but you can plant flowers as far as our concern. So are we not going to allow things still?
That, that's our recommendation, that's staff's recommendation at this point in time. We will certainly follow council's direction.
Okay, because when I looked at the picture and I think some of the issue comes from when they have to move things to do burial. But if, from the picture that I saw that was sent to us, um, it was still on a concrete slab. Like all those headstones have to be on, because I think then they just pick them up with a forklift and move them over. So if they're in, if they're connected to a concrete slab, I don't have any issue with it. And the reason I don't is because a lot of even the stone markers, they make rocks. There's metals in those stone markers and from time to time there are strips of people that go around and cut them off. So I've got opposed to different materials for, for markers as long as they're on a slab.
But I'd comment that I see a difference between a decoration and a marker. And I think that's the distinction maybe.
Yeah, because I think that.
Something that's gonna still have requirements, it needs to be a certain durability. But it's on decoration when it's now the actual marker. It's just a metal, a stone rather than.
I, I agree with that too. If you got something as a decoration, a lot of times families are gonna put them in and then remove them. Now, I deal a lot in stainless steel, stainless steel rust and it rusts, you know, just as, not maybe it not as quickly as a metal, but it does. And what I don't want to have our staff get into is if you have a stainless steel marker and it becomes really rusted out and no family members are taking care of it. Now all of a sudden you're asking staff to make a decision on that marker. Even though you get some rust up on the stone, the main wording and stuff like that will not change. On stainless steel plate, after the time, it will rust out and you will not be able to read it again because I've seen it happen and corrosive nature, just, you know, being on the elements. So for me, you know, that's, that's my big concern on, on markers. What is the, um, so what is our policy or what is, what, what are, what does the cemetery do for stone markers that you can no longer read?
They, they just naturally deteriorate.
We have several stone markers that you can't read anymore. But you, how fast, how fast with your expertise, Rich, and stainless skills, it's a lot faster, isn't it?
It depends on the environment, like you said. If they're, they're a dirt area, that might get some salt spray on it and it would deteriorate faster than something that's away.
That's, that's, that's my opinion.
By the way, from reading this, uh, the metal that you were talking about had nothing to do with like the veterans.
Right.
So I guess under this, under the metal thing, um, we, we have to allow, we have to make an amendment and you guys can make note of it. We have to make an amendment that allows the, that allows the veteran holders because they are clearly metal and they're everywhere. So, um, and, and I guess, yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna argue about how long metal lasts. It's not gonna get into an argument about how long metal lasts, but those things have been out there for eons. And so I, I would, I'm with Cindy. I, I would like to, I would like to allow a family to, to present something different. And it's on them. If, if, if it's a thing, if it doesn't show who, if, if rust and it, and it, and it different than a rock or granite and it, and it doesn't show and they don't take care of it, it's still logged. We still know who's there. It's a number. And so I don't, I'm, I don't, I don't know if I'm really that concerned about how, how many decades go by and it becomes unreadable. Family doesn't wanna mark this, the plot anymore and they don't wanna replace it with something later, then I guess, I just don't see that that's our issue.
If you're looking at, uh, move it, it could be, and it could be a standard construction, if you will. This, if you're gonna put something like that in there, it has to be able to be moved. So it has to be constructed in such a way that it could be lifted, you know, even if you have a cement base and it sits on the slab. Okay, you can still have some form of very standard as to how it must be constructed to be placed there.
As I said, we, we will certainly, I mean, if, if, if council would like to see this type of monument in there. I said, it's our recommendation, but if, you know, it, it's something that council directs us to, to incorporate, that we certainly will.
Yeah, and I'm, and I, and I get it. And I didn't, I didn't understand before, our first conversation about these markers. I did not have any idea that they were ever moved. That was new to me. And so I wanna make sure that they have something, that it's something that they can move without, you know, um, without a lot of issues. But at the same time, I don't, I also don't know what that process is. So if we could, if we could keep the recommendation that Sean and Jim said as far as it's gotta be something that can move and we, and we leave it on that part of it, on the supervision of the cemetery and say, okay, whatever it is that you design has to be moved. It's gotta be movable. And then they can tell the family, this is what you gotta do, you gotta put in. And as the family discuss, you know, comes back and says, well, hey, we'd like to put these small wires around them. Say, no, you can't, it can't be small wires. It's gotta be something a little bit more durable because I'm gonna pick it up on the forklift or whatever. Um, and kind of allow them to, to have some reasonable amount of, of say as to what gets put in there. There was something in here, there was something in here about, well, kind of go, it kind of goes back to the thing about plantings. It says, um, permitted only with direct, um, under the direct, direction of cemetery supervision. So if we allow them to put, to, to say, you know, this is the type of plants you could have, then I would also like to allow them to say, this is the type of structure you have to have. But to just come right out and say that you can't have metal, I guess I'd like to alleviate that a little bit.
And there's many kinds of metal that would, would last just as long as some of the.
Brass will last longer than stainless steel.
Because we wouldn't, we're not gonna be the first cemetery to do, to allow it. So.
Like I said, there's one imposing.
Yeah.
Jim might want to.
I appreciate that for him to go out and take a look at that because that was the photo and it wasn't exactly the same, but it was just an example. So since you're gonna rewrite them and you're just gonna take some time anyhow, see what, bounce that back to them.
Yeah, I'm gonna certainly get the input from, from Sean and Jim Chansky. They, they're the ones that deal with it on a daily basis. I was shocked too at how many, you know, they said about a third of the time they're moving headstones.
So see, see if they can come up with some, some wording or something that gives them the latitude to prove something or to help a family just determine what they can, can do.
Maybe the first one under marker says that exactly already, just it's the one under decorations that says metal, which doesn't really apply to anything.
So I, I'm back to decorations. Number eight says artificial grave decorations containing metals including wire. I think of plastic flowers immediately because there's wire on the plastic flower, but those are allowed, right?
They discourage them.
They do discourage it. So.
You know, we're not gonna go around and inspect our flower.
But you know, they're plastic, they're wire. That's what's gonna hold them together.
But the, the biggest issue with it happens, um, you know, sometimes those will, will deteriorate. That water will get out there and just wound up a lot more. So that costs us a lot of money to, to.
I guess I just would like it to. I, I, I understand all the stuff that flies around and the little butterflies on the wire and all of that that people do. I get that, you know, not allowing that is, is, is. But I guess I, I would like to see this cleaned up. If, if artificial flowers are not allowed, then it shouldn't say that. Because if somebody puts artificial flowers on and somebody goes and takes them because they're not allowed because they didn't know it and because this didn't say it. You could point to it and say, so, Terry says they're not allowed. Nobody stole them. We took them because they got caught in the snowboard. They got caught in the Walmart. So, and I don't care which way it goes, either we should.
Just make sure the public knows what they, what's expected.
So as far as markers and stuff under that particular section, I think that, and it's just me, but I think that we should allow all metal. So as far as markers and stuff under that particular section, I think that, and it's just me, but I think that we should allow all metals. All kinds of metals over that people might wanna use as a marker. Kind of a personal thing, when people pass, they kind of think.
And we could, I could certainly talk with Sean and Jim on that, because we may wanna put some limits on the size.
Well, and that was my other thing, where is there no size limits on any of that?
You said the same thing for monuments and everything else, so, yeah. But does the city really wanna get into the position of, I don't think that that's architecturally, this or that, like this, as to, so a family's desire to remember their loved ones like this. Kinda like some towns that have a lot of the old structures is like this, and before you can paint the house, you have to go before a boards like this, and if they don't like your colors, because it doesn't meet these standards. I don't want that portion of the cemetery to also be figured that way.
Good reason, but there's several, I mean, in the cemetery, in both sides, there's several. There's small ones, there's huge ones, there's, you know, some people bought whole corners and the whole families in there. They've built, you know, walls and buildings and, and all of that. So I think depending on how many lots they have, if it's just one, it should be, okay, this is whatever the size of the base is, and then whatever you can build on the base, I don't know.
Sorry, lost my, your computer.
I don't know, oh, I'm sorry. But I think we should address size in some fashion. I mean, because the base is going to be limited to the size of the, of the plot that you want, period.
There's only been on the base of the headstone.
So, but I think size should be in here somewhere. Going, anyone have?
I understand your point.
As far as, well, I think this is funny, responsible for errors in location of graves, lots arising from improper instruction by lot owners. What is that?
I'm sorry.
So number.
Number two.
Number two, what is that?
Under miscellany.
Did every accident they buried?
If the, if the landlord gives the funeral home, I own block eight and block B, and they early own block six in lot B, yeah, you know, it's just, it's just a safeguard so that if we bury somebody in the wrong place, which hasn't happened, because we usually check those, but it's just a safeguard.
Okay, okay, okay. Number five, following or prohibited in the cemetery, motorcycles, no, both horses, dogs. I think, and just going to dogs, I think that dogs should be on leashes.
No, I'm not.
Okay, dogs should be on leashes, and I think they should stay on the paved portion of, of the cemetery. I've been in the cemetery where people let their dogs run, they're being, you know, people who have their dogs on a leash have to be.
Or you should hand it those people.
But I think that if they should be on the page, and I think there should also state in here that they need to pick up after they're in. So there's that. Motorcycles, I think, should be allowed if there's, if there's memorial or if it's, you know, someone's coming in. I think that should be allowed. Who determines that? Who determines that? Yes, that someone's asked for permission for.
That would be the cemetery supervisor. I mean, if they come up and says, hey, we've got this large motor group that's coming in here, okay. Like I said, the attention goes back to somebody having a funeral and somebody going through there. A muffler's on their body.
Yeah, so our, our suggestion, dating back from the first time I brought this, was to just scratch that altogether. Because it's gonna be, if there's an issue, it's gonna be the same as if, if it's an extremely loud car or something like that.
So Sean, try to give a problem that's striking out of there.
We also have the age of orange riders.
So we're just gonna strike it right out of them. So if I wanna go in tomorrow on my motorcycle, I don't have to register with somebody, I don't have to tell them I'm going, and we'll just allow the general motorcycle rider to acknowledge the fact that somebody might be having a memorial.
And I think the same holds true with horses, you don't see a lot of horses in the cemetery, but every once in a while you will see somebody because there's people that like the horses.
No, I think those, those would certainly, I think we could do that.
For burial, not for just riding through.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, because how do you even get a horse to the cemetery? I, I think, I think horses would be.
Well, they still talk about that sanctuary walk.
I think it's, if somebody's doing a specific thing and they're, they're, they're gonna come to, they're gonna, I don't think that.
I think we should just say special request to be approved by whoever. Skateboards, are skateboards allowed in the cemetery?
Why aren't skateboards allowed?
They just never have, I think there's a side off.
Makes sense to me. I can write it down the bike path, but when I get to the cemetery, I gotta pick it up and walk with it. They do? All right, leaving it.
You know, actually, those are things we need to check.
And maybe you allow them just on the paper, or should maybe, maybe the, not a. I don't know.
No, no?
No, no.
And if I may, couldn't this, if you allow these things, couldn't it be covered under the provision, under no person shall disturb these? Yeah, so maybe that's encompassed in that section in some manner.
And I think, you know, we're, we'd certainly ask Jim's input on some of the assistant areas.
We'll send that to you guys.
Something I, I think that we need a lot more input on than just.
As agreed.
And maybe even ask the funeral homes if they develop law on some of this stuff, better questions that have come up, problems than we would, to see if they have any input. Okay, that's.
Ultimately, there are customers, there were customers as well, so.
And when comes, there's guys, and then you have to be, some adjustments made for specific, because when there's our guard going off or when some thing they, obviously they're pretty loud, so for a specific situation, it's appropriate, this couldn't be under the directors, you know.
Yeah, just drop a thing at the end that says, any, anything, anything requested be outside of these rules or need to be gone through you or something.
They can, they can be requested.
That way somebody wants.
Application from the supervisor of the cemetery.
Then they know, yeah.
With a number of these things, kinda go through the funeral director, kinda thing that maybe discuss, this is what we're planning on doing for this funeral. Contact the city about it, stuff like this.
Funeral directors do communicate with the supervisor on a lot of these issues.
We'll send that back again.
Just, you know, there's no timelines, maybe take us a little while to get.
So either you need to postpone that or.
Don't use the key word. Until the committee's ready, let's just handle it like that. Somebody make a motion that we, that we postpone this until Rich brings it back.
I will postpone this until Rich brings this back to council.
Okay. When you're ready.
Mayor Waldorf? Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Potom Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
And Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Motion great.
Excellent. Next up, new business, the goose egg collection.
Yeah, I did follow up with Sean on the process for goose egg collection. Sean indicated that they are required to have an employee who has participated in the training through the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for goose egg collection. The training is typically held out in Lobei, once a year, typically in the spring, is where that training is held.
And we didn't, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't want to get too far.
Yeah, he hasn't seen anything as yet.
But we send one person, and that person is therefore in charge of the goose, the nest thing.
We've had, we've had about four people that have gone down to the training. Unfortunately, three of them have retired or left the employment of the city, so we're down to one. Right now, Mike Mishley is the only one who is still training for that. So this spring, we would, it would be our intention to send two more people down, so that we, we're not in a situation where we don't have somebody.
Right, but what I meant was, so, so we send somebody down there and they get certified and they come back, but they're not the only ones that can collect goose eggs. They're the ones that were trained and then they tell everybody, oh.
They're supposed to be governed under their supervision.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that, I wasn't.
But that's the way I understood it from Sean.
That makes sense.
The rules pertaining to the Canadian geese and goose egg collection are as follows, which is significant portions highlighted. I'm not going through reading all of this, but basically it's that we have to be in possession of somewhat, or have a certification that allows us to collect or destroy the nest, collect the eggs or destroy the nest. Two, we need to submit an annual report at the end to identify how many goose eggs we have collected. Typically, we're talking to Sean, it's in excess of like a hundred, between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and seventy, I think, is the number that he, he'd indicate to me. But the question arose whether this activity could be done with volunteers in Lobei or conjunction with city employees. It is a potential to have it done as a volunteer program. The biggest factor will be coordination and availability of any such volunteers for the activity needs to be done, as well as the availability of votes to accomplish it. By my understanding from that permit, there is a specific time period in which we are allowed to do that, perform that activity, and we need to have it done within that timeline. These volunteers would also need to attend the mandatory training, we say that, if they're gonna do it on their own, they would do it. In the past, public works employees have been able to successfully accomplish the goose egg collection. The only reason the collection wasn't undertaken this year is related to the COVID outbreak and social distancing. These goose egg collection activities can be undertaken in a day, but at times we are required to make a second collection effort a week or so after the first, depending on weather and the number of eggs collected. This effort has proved to be beneficial in reducing the number of residential, resident geese in Alpena throughout the summer. This can be evidenced by the higher number of goslings apparent this year. So the biggest thing is if there are, there are individuals out there who want to participate in this process, and, you know, there are rules and regulations that we have to abide by. They are willing to abide by those rules and regulations. Sean, did I think of something that was instrumental about, it's just gonna take a little coordination if we do wanna proceed this way.
And we, we only collect off of nests that are on city property? Or do we have permission from any residents that we do that?
We just concentrate out in the wildlife sanctuary area and the lake, the fair, well, the fairgrounds are often there. But, and then the lake over by Bess.
Yeah, it mentions that for sort of issue only to the landlord or if they really see something that may transferable, so if you get one for the property, it's a lot of property.
Yeah, but if we, I mean, if somebody, somebody in the city knows that they have a lot of, that they have nests, that they would just have, we would have to know that ahead of time if they wanted us to, so we'd have to put their property on there.
If they're out there in the wetlands adjacent, and they would still be in that area.
Right. You brought that here, so we're all.
So all you want, I, 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 we can get a group, get people together to shoot them, I'm sure we can get people together to fly days. Maybe it comes at Easter time.
Does he wanna let us know when?
Yeah, what we'll do is, is once we get the permit application mailed, submitted, you know, we can certainly advise council. In the meantime, if you wanna get some information out, you know, if people are interested in participating.
I have one question.
Sure.
As far as the permitting, though, you can add in, like, someone who owns their own property and has a property, you can add that into the permit application to be submitted with the city, is that correct?
I believe so.
So that could also be something that you could ask the citizens.
Thing, yes, so.
We just, I guess the only thing I would caution is, it may not seem like much, but we have to be careful with using taxpayer funded positions on private property, which is something we are very.
Well, that's where the volunteers would come in.
Yeah, careful, so.
So we put the volunteers to do stuff like that, maybe.
I think the owner, landlord would have to get the issue permit to, to them, it says permission should be issued only to the landlord. So, I mean, they have to actually get the permit.
People's land, you know, what lands adjacent to it, it's gonna be different.
We, we had collected a lot of eggs out from the wetlands area in the section.
Excellent, we're all set with that? Next up is the adoption of the Michigan Kewers Park Plan. What I did? Oh, I'm sorry, the Performance Locker Lease Agreement Termination, sure.
Casey Stottzman has informed the city that he has discontinued his business, the Performance Locker, operating out of Michikus Warming Shelter. As such, the city will need to accept the termination of this contract. The termination language is as follows. Any modifications, alterations, extensions, conditions served shall be coordinated with the city. This agreement may be terminated by either party with sixty days written notice for cause and with a minimum of four months advance notice without cause. And to see if that the doctor here may refer it to the public from the building. Casey informed city staff in March 2020 that he was closing due to COVID pandemic and was not sure of the potential for the future Performance Lock. Thus, Casey Stottzman did provide the four months advance notice to the city. Per the agreement, any improvements performed or installed by him through his company became the property of the city of Alpena. The Performance Locker has been an asset to the community and has provided good use for the warming shelter. In wishing well in its future endeavors, the city staff will be looking at future plans and uses for the warming shelter. We already had some interest from the farmer's market about possibly using that or portion of it.
Okay.
And just to follow up, I did have a conversation with Mary Beth Casey's wife. They do plan on continuing to operate out of the duck park, at least the kayaks, paddles, boards and that. But they're not leasing anything out or operating out of the warming shelter anymore.
Okay.
They did make their, agreed upon payments all the way through February, and then at that time, Rich and I talked about it and we decided to, since it was closed down due to COVID and even operated and have any income, we decided to wait for payments.
And more than likely not using any utilities or anything, so, yeah, I, I don't have an issue with that. Sad enough that it happened. Do we need to approve that, or are you just reporting that you did it?
Yeah, I was kinda reporting.
That's fine, because there was a contract with the, with the city, so more than likely would.
You should probably just accept his tender of resignation or tender of termination.
Okay. Yeah, we'll do that. So move.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Potom Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
And Mayor Waldorf?
Hi.
Next up, adoption of Michigan Kewers Park Plan.
A number of years ago, the city went through the process with design shreds, et cetera, for the Starlight Beach, Michikus Improvement Project, and that did go all the way down to Baby Park. But it was really concentrated on Starlight Beach, Michikus. That was done in the late mid nineties. And we concentrated after that was adopted on the Michigan Kewas or Starlight Beach portion of those improvement plans. We've got a significant portion of those improvements done, and now it was time to move on to Starlight Beach. With that plan being fourteen years old, fifteen years old, we went back and we had additional public input sessions on, for the potential improvements to Michigan Kewas. Or basically as an update to that original master plan for the area. We held two public input sessions at NOAA, publicly invited to attend. And basically, while this isn't, I would say, a unanimous position of all those attending, it was more or less the general consensus of, of those that were attendants. Uh, and we're going to, we're going to start at the, at the north end and kind of work slowly down. But one of the, one of the big things was trying to maintain some large open area out in front along State Avenue. That doesn't mean it's something else. You could have some other modification planned in the future, but at least at this point in time, we wanted to maintain that as a large open area. The other thing we looked at was with the farmer's market moving down there, they are getting further comments back to us, additional participants, additional visitors to there. So we looked at installing a pavilion down at Starlight Beach, or excuse me, Michigan Kewas Park. And that would be a multi-use pavilion that would be used not just for the farmer's market, but could also be used for other events, outdoor events and activities. And those would have bathrooms, facilities located in one end. The other thing, as we, as we work our way around there, we looked at removing the bike, bike ramps and the tennis courts over there along the water plant. While it did not come to fruition, we were looking at additional clearwell storage. That site was where the tennis courts were, it was originally designed as future expansion for the water plant. So that was more than likely where those, those new clearwells were going to have to go. But those bike, the bike ramps in there are in very poor condition. The whole area is, is pretty sad, so we wanted to get rid of that. One of the probably more hot topics was the bicycle pump track. Whether that gets constructed or not, we can certainly pursue that as it goes along. It was, you know, we had comments both ways on it. Some people didn't think it should be there. Others felt that it was appropriate down at the end of the park. One of the big things is going to be relocating the volleyball courts from right on the shoreline. We've lost two of the courts for sure. There's a third one in jeopardy down there. And I suspect that we may see even more damage to those court areas as the winter presses and we start seeing ice damage. So we did meet with the volleyball group. They obviously would like to have those volleyball courts on, right on the shoreline, on the beach itself. But, you know, I'm getting concerned that we would have that same potential issue in the future. So we, we looked at moving them back up here just off the beach, still at the city of Michigan Park, being on the shoreline, but protected by the walkway. And you'll see in the, in the dark shadowy area, the paved walkway portion there. And the intention would be is to, is to build that up a little bit. Not, I'd say it's six feet here, but we probably build it up a couple of feet so that we've got some type of, of, um, to, to help protect that, that shoreline. And as far enough back, it should be out of the high water area. Because it means not going to get wave action and wind action waves any yet, but we should be protected. Another one of the, the big discussion points was, you'll see on here, we have it, we have the, the farmer's market pavilion, the parking around it. And then you'll see that yellow line around, around there. That is the line of demarcation, so to speak, between motorized and non-motorized. You know, we heard a lot about natural area and quiet area. In that, as far as comments from those input sessions. And so one of the things we looked at was to make the entire southern portion of the park basically non-motorized. Bicycles walking, et cetera, down into that area to keep, keep the cars out of there. And, you know, then again, we, we, we get the input for the pickleball. We've been approached about putting a second, allowing them to mark a second court at Bayview Park for the pickleball courts. We looked at putting some here, upgrading the horseshoe pits. Another hot, I won't say hot topic, but one of the questions that arose, up next to the farmer's market pavilion, we incorporated a place, place gate, a small play structure similar to what Rotary put in over at Michigan or Starlight Beach. Concerns about having it close to the, close to the driveway area and that, but it's something we felt we wanted to keep it close to the farmer's market structure so that kids could go play, the parents could go to the farmer's market, or if there's other activities go out there and close proximity so they could be watched. And then for the South Steve. The whole, the whole purpose on the bottom end, or the southern end of that was to put in a twelve foot non-motorized paint pit where the people to play, ride, walk. But then we had some intermediary, intermediary natural rails, like bark, similar to what you might see on, on the island. Just to provide a little bit of variety down in there. This was, the master plan was presented to the Recreation Advisory Board, who unanimously supported this, this concept for the master plan.
The only issues I had, I guess, right off the bat was, um, I get the, the whole open area on State Avenue, but I, personally, I would scratch the possibility of disco next to US twenty-three, because you've seen me play disco. It's probably not really a good idea to put it up by a highway. But that's neither here nor there, but I just wanted to mention that. Might have to be really something that we want to consider. The other thing was that, for, when I see Michigan Kewas outside of the farmer's market and the volleyball, the biggest use I see of that entire park is people that pull in there and they sit in their vehicle and they eat while they watch the waves come in. It is the number one thing for that park, and we have completely taken that possibility out. Where else in this town could somebody go and park their vehicle and see the water like they can currently at Michigan Kewas? I don't think there's anywhere, so. Now, no, the harbor is not the bay. The harbor, you're only looking at the harbor because of the brick wall. So as far as seeing the water coming in, it, it's obviously popular and it's what people do. So I would really like to see that concept protected somehow for the, there's a lot of people that do that.
Yeah, you know, you know, with this past summer with COVID in the end, kids were home, they were taking care of dogs, so my wife and I could spend time in town and lunch. You know, and, and we would go down, we would get something to eat. I think we pulled into that portion down there once. The rest of the time, we were at, at Starlight Beach. We were down on Harbor Drive, or not Harbor Drive, around the street. I mean, there are other locations where you can do that. There's two parking lots in Starlight Beach where you can watch that. Flipside, you know, you get, you do get a few people who do go down and do that. I won't, I won't say how many, a lot and a few. The other thing is, and this was input from Casey Stutzman after one of these things, this is, you see the kids down there looking around, their cars and trucks, you know, flying through there or meeting for whatever activities they may be meeting for.
Yeah. Um, and I, I brought it up with Casey and everybody else at the time that, personally, I'd rather see them doing that where everybody can see them. And that's a great parking lot, sorry. But that's the big issue is parking lot. Down by the water, and I'm just suggesting, I'm just suggesting that a lot of people do that. I don't like to watch the waves come in. So maybe at some, I mean, this isn't, this isn't solidified. Normally they're not. I mean, we can modify them at some point.
And I, you know, even if this, even if we bang the gavel on this, this is, this is the, the master plan. That doesn't mean that when it comes time to do the actual construction, it's going to be exactly like that. Michigan, Starlight Beach is a good example. We flip flopped a couple of different elements in there. Because it was, it was more beneficial for the long-term use, like the way we had those flip. And of course, yeah, it's not set in concrete. It's a general master plan for us.
I was kind of looking at where the bicycle pump track is versus the disc golf. We just sit there, push the bicycles over there where the disc golf was and it has sort of an area there with big, big tables and parking there. On the outside, you're still close enough to the beach area to see the waves and like this. Well, like I said, we do take the grandkids over quite often after getting something from Donalds or something. I guess we're out there today.
One other thing that came up and at the meeting was there are several kite surfers. And this is the only location in our community that they can kite surf and spread out the, the lines to do that. And it's delightful joy watching it too, even if you don't do it. It's a unique thing and it's a growing sport. And if we put that twelve foot rain path, it's going to really, they won't have that open space just to spread out their lines. You know, and they shouldn't take up the whole course. The volleyball, they can play with the space too. I just, that was a, there was a vocal group there that just passionate, passionate about their sport. And to take their plan, it kind of eliminates that way of doing it for them. They're alone. It's hard to do it on the water unless they have, they just, they explained it very well, but that's such a, you know, having that much space, like having, having options open for people. And then having the play area surrounded by parking, I think is a serious concern. Having it near the, near the farmer's market area makes sense, but it should be in grass adjacent to it. Because if you had to walk across the road to get to it, you, they can't tell the kids go do that if it's a little kid. Oh yeah, go to the playground, cross traffic and then, so I think if, having it near is one thing, but having it literally surrounded by a driveway, I think is unsafe. And it doesn't allow for physically, safely, there's a lot of traffic at the farmer's market. You go down there, even now, well, it's kind of, you know, it's kind of moosey goosey because there's a lot of driveways, but there's, it's really having traffic in and out, which is great to see. It's an asset to our community. But I just don't think surrounding the playground, the parking lot makes sense, so.
Yeah, I, I agree with that point. I think to the mayor's point too, you know, there was a vocal group that did come down and asked about, you know, kite surf. Their biggest concern was not a lot of structures or anything within that area. But as far as, you know, the kayakers in the community and the paddleboarders, they like that area to drive down because it's easy to park in that area, watch the waves and just walk out a short distance to be able to get on the water quickly. So, you know, and the, the kite boarders and the kayakers and paddleboarders, they would, you know, often share that, you know, those waters. So, so to the mayor's point, I can understand that as well as leaving, you know, that to a motorized section back in there, just kind of clean it up and, and pave it. We're always going to, if we, we close it down, it is going to be a quieter area and I understand that as well. But if we, we pave it and, you know, if kids are going to be kids, we're whatever we do with that, that end of it. But I don't want to cut off a portion to improve one portion, but actually hurt another portion of the area for access. Because kite boarders even said the same thing. They've got to have an area that they can actually get close enough to be able to carry the equipment. You know, and we can't carry it, you know, a couple acres to be able to do that, so just make sense. I am a kayaker and I use that area for that, so, you know.
Yeah, so maybe just some future thought of allowing some, some motorized vehicle, even if it's, uh, and, and I don't know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm having a hard time with scale. I'm looking over at Steve, but I'm having, so it's really hard to say how much grass area there is between. So if it's, you know, somehow seems appropriate to be able to motorize, you know, down, down past where you have the tennis courts and then stop the motor. I don't have a problem with no motorized vehicles like down the whole park, but at least getting it close enough for people that are bringing their recreational equipment and stuff, but, so.
Mine, I also suggest, we're, we're getting ready to go into updating our five-year recreation plan. It actually expires at the end of this year, and that's what we do in order to secure any DNR grants.
Right.
That, you know, this is really just a roadmap for what could happen down there, but some modifications could be made during that process. Because that process does include additional public input. And, you know, this is all, these are all good comments that, you know, we may or may not have heard before. Or maybe they weren't giving, given a strong enough emphasis before, but we could, you know, I don't know what, if you want to actually adopt this and then say that there will be changes made during the, you know, process if warranted. But, you know, that's just an option if we need it.
Have you considered concrete or, or boards? I've seen those at some campground.
You have a hard to hold those away.
Exactly. No.
And, and to say Amber's opinion, you know, we, we did, you know, with any sport, there's certain action people love it. You know, and the kite boarders, they wanted, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, like a hundred and fifty feet of clear zone.
That's what we were hoping to add.
Yeah.
Yeah, nothing.
You know, that could be, that could be very impractical for a good portion of the improvements in park. We have tried to incorporate a large greenbelt area.
For, I guess, for instance, between the path and the edge of the water on the map is roughly eighty to a hundred feet.
Eighty to a hundred.
That's what this is.
And the path is?
It's not, it's like you said, it's going to be elevated, you know, a, a, you know, a couple of feet at the most, you know. And it's going to be tapered up there, so that's not going to be an impact to them. Originally, they, didn't they talk, Steve, about going down where that pump track was as a potential?
Uh, yes. Discussion on that, yeah.
For kite, kite boarding in the end, so, you know, it, it's, it's not something that we, throughout, we did try to incorporate it, but we certainly, I, I don't think to incorporate it to a level that they would like to see it's, it's in the best interest of the overall improvements down there. Obviously, this, right now, there's probably, there'd be eighty feet at the, at the most. You know, when lower, lake levels come back in, that, obviously that distance is going to expand out.
I, I think that's the best approach you can do too, Rich. You just gotta, you know, do what's going to be best, even if you really look at the overall use of it. I mean, we're not going to turn the whole thing into volleyball courts, even though that's the biggest user when you count the number of participants. But if you look at the people that actually drive there and enjoy their lunch, there's more people that would do that than actually would kite board down in that area. So, I mean, we're trying to accommodate as much as we can, you know, but we have to be within reason. So I think that's a very good approach.
And, and I think it's fine. I, I don't know.
You know, we could, you know, you're, you're commenting about maybe going. You know, we could, you know, you're, you're coming about maybe going, we talked about that. You know, there's potentially extending some of those ready portions down there a little bit further. You know, we could certainly incorporate that into a future, you know, as part of the overall rec plan update. At least they are gonna.
Okay.
And this will, if nothing else, this would generate a lot of comments.
Yeah, and that's fine. Well, you did just here. So that's all good. I just wanted to make sure that we were, that we all kind of gave our voice a little bit. And, you know, as far as that, as far as that paved drive there, I mean, I don't know. Thankful that we had, that we put that one in at Starlight Beach because it's, it in turn saved, you know, the, the sand from going any further than it did. I don't know how much sand we're getting on Michikios, whether it's the impact that it's been at Starlight. So.
We, we haven't seen it build up those walls, done their job stopping a lot of the sand. Unfortunately, some of the backside of those walls.
Well, what about Michikios? Is, is that, is there an issue there as well?
We're getting washed up up into that area. We're not, it's so flat and sloping, we're not seeing the damage like we are, other than at the volleyball.
Right. Yeah, that is. Yeah. So overall, I mean, overall, it was kind of what I expected just from the feedback we got back during the RV, RV park conversation. So this is really.
Was that back in there?
No, I was sure. But I was, I was obviously the minority, but, but at that time, this was basically the whole concept. I'm not too surprised.
Yes, we did.
I don't have an issue with adopting it with, with, with staff knowing that, that there might be some future modifications during the rec plan update.
Do you want to make a motion?
Sure. Okay.
I move that we adopt Michikios Park Plan with the understanding of modification in the future.
Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Wallenora? And Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Motion three.
Thank you, Rich. And you're going to stick around for the La Forest and Oliver infrastructure upgrades?
Actually, I would like to pass this over to Mr. Schultz.
So on August 11th, 2020, the city received an open bid for the La Forest and Oliver infrastructure upgrade project. This project, that's a month. I've been writing it all out. I've never set it up out. This project includes installation of water and sewer utilities, excavation and installation of subways, curb and gutter, HMA paving and soil restoration on the Forest Avenue between Oliver and Ripley, as well as Oliver Street from the Forest. This project's primary focus is to upgrade the size of the eight-inch water main on Oliver Street to a 16-inch to parallel the 24-inch water main on Ripley, which is one of the main distribution lines for the city. This will allow the remainder of the city to have sufficient water pressure while the 24-inch on Ripley is being repaired or eventually completely replaced. When we have breaks on, on Ripley, which we are having more now, we end up with, it results in again, lower pressures throughout the city. And having, building this on Oliver Street to parallel that, I mean, it's not 24-inch, but it's certainly going to make it better for the rest of residents when we eventually shut that whole system down for months to replace it.
Okay.
Got a kudos from the DEQ too, from the Eagle, when we, when I put this project to him and asked for the permit. He, he gave us kudos as forward-thinking community.
Very good.
That was pretty good.
Very good.
Bid documents were sent to 11 firms and posted on the city's website. Two bids received. MacArthur Construction and Homer's Crane and Dozer were the bidders and MacArthur Construction as well. At $2,070,646.60. Due to the magnitude of this project, it has been budgeted to be constructed over two fiscal years with funding of $514,000 in the water fund and $525,000 in the sewer fund for fiscal year 2021. And the remainder will be budgeted in 2122. The as-bid prices are low engineer's estimate and the engineering department has reviewed the prices and prices that we received. And there's no anomalies. And so it's our recommendation, my recommendation as assistant city engineer, that the project be awarded to MacArthur Construction for the as-tated bid prices totaling $2,070,646.60 with a total of $1,039,000 to be spent in this fiscal year and the remainder for the following.
And when do we, when do we anticipate the starting of this part? Is that, was it?
Parks is going to be a problem. We're hoping this fall yet. We kind of already scheduled a meeting, you know, pending for tonight with contractor on Thursday. And in hopes that maybe you can get some stuff ordered and get it here. But the duct wiring is going to be a problem because it's a ways out in the big parts.
Okay.
They're a large diameter. So hopefully, and if not, we wrote it into the specs to start no later than next spring.
Okay. And no questions? All right. Thanks, Dave. I move we award the La Forest Oliver project to MacArthur Construction in the amount of $2,070,646.60.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Wallenora?
Hi.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
And Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
Motion three.
Thank you. I move we adjourn to close session to discuss pending litigation. Okay. And just for the, for the viewers and the media, I would recommend that we'll just stop the meeting. There won't be any action taken by council after the, after the close session because it's just an update. So all we will be doing is coming back and adjourning, which we will, but no, no real necessity to stay on. And we'll leave it at that.
I'll take a roll on that. Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Wallenora?
Hi.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Potam Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion three.